I'm gonna log.
With a lot of.
Give me one second to log in.
Just what I mean.
Yeah.
In which one they cover the paper.
Oh, you want in?
Yes, please.
The one we find them us. There it is. Will allow me to scan. Makes me in the panelist.
Stories that way you don't have to worry about sharing screen and I can share it just be on my side.
Love it. Let's say it's just.
All right, uh, seven oh three P M. We will call planning commission to order for the month of September. Uh, we'll begin with roll call. Drew Folk. James Woodsons.
Uh, Kenny Renter Sinner.
Allison Miller.
Colin Forsyth.
Excellent, uh. We will review the minutes from previous month's meeting. Any comments or questions regarding last month's meeting notes from August seventh? If that silence is a no, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from last month? Yeah.
Uh, second.
Perfect. Alright, so the next item on our agenda is the uh, public hearing for unit lot subdivision. Uh, so before we move into the public hearing, uh, we will do a quick uh, review of where we landed last time with the uh, the codes of staff report from our good trusted friend Maggie here.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna attempt to share screen just so everyone can follow with me. Uh, so bear with me as I get this up for recording. Hopefully. Oops. Or. So hopefully this is screen sharing. I don't know that it is. Thanks for your patience, guys. I'm just gonna kind of walk through uh, the staff report that I have here. So um, you know what subdivision is what we're discussing tonight. We have talked about it for the last um, two months with the planning commission. This has been number two um, on the docket for this year to review. This is similar to condominium code that we recently approved um with a few uh, differences here. Um, but just to kind of go through the backstory, um, R C W fifty eight seventeen zero six zero now requires that all cities and towns adopt procedures for unit lot subdivision with the not next comprehensive plan cycle. Um, that's in twenty twenty six. So this is something we're looking at now along with a lot of other cities um, and counties in in the state. Um, this is to allow subdivision of a parent lot into separately owned unit lots. Um. And uh the portions of the parent lot not subdivided for individual individual unit lots um, would then be owned in common by the owners of the individual unit lots um, or by an H O A. Um, there are a few differences between unit lot and condominium ownership and I I outlined those in the staff report. Number one, in a unit lot subdivision, residents own their dwelling unit and the land beneath it. Which is different from condo ownership where they just own the structure itself and the land is owned in common. Um, number two, a unit lot subdivision, the residents may share access utilities and infrastructure with other residents. Whereas in a condo, it's all under the commonly owned H O A. Um, and then unit lot subdivisions are all processed um, through a short or major subdivision based on the number of lots. Whereas the condos are processed through binding site plan. And they both follow very similar processes. It's just different types of land division. Um, as drafted, this tool may be used in all zoning districts um for residential development of two or more units. So this includes A D U's. So a home with an A D U could then be subdivided into two unit lots. Uh, it could be used for duplexes um, similar to um, what Upper Valley Mend was requesting, only in this case they could subdivide the land with the units. So the owners could own the unit with the land. Um, this could apply to town homes and as well as cottage housing, as long as the underlying zone allows for the use. So this is all based again on the underlying zoning. Um, it doesn't change density. Um, that's a big clarification I want to make. Um, it the dense it, the density that's allowed into the un- underlying zoning is what um what we're looking at. This just creates those individual property lines. It doesn't allow the intensity in itself. Um. Planning question did a review this draft code during the July and August meetings. I did um, work with legal and made some minor changes based on our discussions. Um, and those are outlined in the current draft form and that's what's um up for discussion today at this hearing. Um. And uh, we did receive after the issuance of this staff report, we did receive two public comments. And those were forwarded on to uh, the commission and are included in the file of record. Um. One of those was from R C three who had some of the same concerns with wildfire risk and I just wanted to further comment that um, I did include uh in the staff report that new structures in the city of Lubbock are required to comply with the construction standards um, in L M C fifteen oh six, which is our wildland urban interface code. So any new construction has to meet those permitting standards and there are recommendations for um, vegetation and um, keeping that um defensible space around the structure. Um, I I want to note the fire district did talk to me last week and has no concerns with the proposed code as drafted. Um, they uh they found that um, the the FEMA code that was um provided by R C three is applicable across the country and more specifically to communities that haven't adopted a wildland urban interface code. Uh, we have done that and we're one of the very few cities, counties in the state that have actually adopted a code that is pretty stringent. Um, they also further commented that while we have the defensible spaces recommendations only, the reason we have those as recommendations is because there's not enough manpower with the fire district three doesn't want to have to regulate that um, on individual properties. They're leaving that up to the property owners to really be mindful of wildfire prevention and to take some ownership in that. And the city too, we have a one part-time code enforcement officer. We do not have the capability to monitor people's vegetation on their properties. So um, we have those recommendations built into code and it's up to property owners to follow those. If some if uh, with the unit lot subdivision, they have an H O A that wants to adopt those standards and require them and enforce them at an H O A level, then that that could be a possibility. But at this point in time, the city is not um, pushing that as a requirement, but more as a recommendation. Um, and then regarding affordable housing, um similar to with condos, um, this is intended to increase homeownership options. Um, we're looking at other um, codes to address affordability, but really um, this is similar to the condo code that was recently adopted. The the main difference is having that ownership of the land underneath the home. And in regards to um, the recommendations and findings that were in the staff report, um, the proposed code is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And um, staff is uh recommending um, approval of the code um, as drafted. And I will leave it at that. Do you have any questions for me? Am I out of turn there with hearing this work?
No, no, you're good. Um, we were start our city to discuss enough yourself. So if there are any questions or or comments or points you want to discuss, this would be the time.
Uh. I emailed you Maggie about um where is it? Section uh, H under uh, review criteria approved.
Oh, yeah.
Is that? Uh, do we have to put that in there because Schleien County has not and will not adopt Title fourteen?
We did add this in there just because we've had some issues with the county and and interpretations of our code. Um, I did run this by legal. Um. There's some clarification. We prefer it right now. It says if these regulations are adopted by Schleien County for the cities or when growth area connections to city water and sewer are not required when there is an approved well and approved onsite septic system for each unit. Um, I don't think that's intended to say like each needs a separate well and a separate system.
That was my only concern is that's kind of how it reads. So if the county is left to their own devices to interpret this as they tend to do. They might say, no, you can't. Like you would have to have a separate septic system for each unit, which would often not be feasible.
So it's like a house A D U situation. So if we said where there is an approved well and approved onsite septic system? Period?
Yeah, I mean, if you if you eliminated the for each unit, I think that would
Okay.
simplify it because then it can be interpreted as like shared utilities for as long as you have it on on the parent parcel and it is designed to serve all of the units one way or another.
And I mean, they have to get that well and septic rule for the units with the voting permit. So if we just left it at approved well and onsite septic system and took out what I sorry, it's hard to see here, but I just scratched that. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
That clarifies. And then I remember your other question being on letter A here. Um, this, so letter A was taken specifically from um we we piggybacked off of the city of Spokane code. Um, and maybe it's the difference with semantics between saying and or and or in this statement, but um, this is just to show to tell them that with the unit lot subdivision on the reported document, they need to, if applicable, they need to disclose access easement, joint use maintenance agreements, covenants, conditions, restrictions. And then um, common areas, onsite recreation, landscaping, utilities, common open space. Right here where it says exterior building facades and roofs, that's just to show the roof line. I think it's more if it's existing, they want to see where that is in relation to other properties and whose responsibility that is for maintenance. Um, but it might not always applied. Um. I think it's just to basically they're trying to encompass everything. They want to see everything that's under the roof, basically.
Yeah, that's um.
But it's that either, I mean, it may not apply in every circumstance. So I don't know if you want me to add it and or.
I don't know. I think when we were talking about it right before since it seems reasonably clear that it is interpreted as whichever of these are applicable and not all of these.
Right, like in some cases, there may not be an access easement.
Right, or onsite recreation, not always going to be applicable.
Right, just so like clearly defining the uses and their or intended uses and str- any structures onsite is basically what that's trying to get at. But if there is some clarification that could be made, I could talk with legal about clarifying that. It's fine if you think it's necessary.
I think it's.
Any other thoughts or questions from the commission?
Yes, but no. Uh-uh.
Okay. Then we will move to the public hearing session of today's meeting. So we'll now open the public hearing session uh, at seven sixteen P M. Uh, the purpose of this public hearing is for the community to uh, provide their comments regarding the proposed code amendment for unit lot subdivision. Um, we do ask that anyone that is uh, speaking to provide their their name uh, and their address. Um, and that when you're doing so, please address um don't address anything to any individual commission member, but uh, to the commission itself or to me to me directly. Um. And that we just asked for for basic courtesy and etiquette during this process. With that being said, I will open the floor for public comment.
So we have nobody online? Nobody.
Zeke just walked in and then.
I was gonna say, I saw Zeke for a little bit. Hey.
See. Not to put you on the spot, Zeke, but we are uh, we just opened the public hearing section of our unit lot subdivision. So this would be your chance to chime in, should you want to.
Oh, I don't want to speak. All right, yeah. Good stuff. Just hear the other information.
I don't think couple of person, you know, we do a public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
I think you're. I don't know that's, I don't think that the staff was saying maybe. And fluid was concerned, fluid was the council on the new processes, but I don't know if we can ask. But I'm anyway. I'm not speaking.
Still, just us. Maggie and so.
How long do you have to keep a meeting open before?
No.
We will still a couple of minutes.
That to get people on.
Yes. Someone help lay on my discussing themselves.
It's in the seven twelve. Okay.
Well, I guess I just have questions on the right, any question? Or just like just come?
This is probably a comment, but I will close it now. So we will officially close the public comment session uh, at seven twenty P M. Um. I will open up just general questions if you'd like to hit see.
Okay. We're talking here or we look there?
You're fine.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I just like be honest, I haven't really had a lot of time to review this. I've talked uh somewhat with uh Allison on the unit subdivision uh, process. And I guess could you have a difference between this and condominium nation, whatever, how you want to say that word, you know, it they, that's kind of pretty similar as far as I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It it is really similar. I tried to break it down a little bit in the staff report, but um the main differences are if with a condo or with a, you know, lot subdivision, the residents own the dwelling and then a portion of the land underneath. Whereas in a, in a condo, they only own what's within the walls of their structure and the land is owned in common by everyone. So this, this would allow people to own a little bit of property as well uh, as the structure itself. Um. You know, lot subdivision, the residents can share access and utilities. They may not always um and uh it's in a condo, everything is owned in common. Um, and then as far as the process, they both go through a subdivision process, but with the condo, they go through binding site plan, which is a administrative process. Um, the unit lot subdivision, depending on the number of lots, will either go through a short subdivision, which is also an administrative process or a major subdivision, which is a quasi judicial process. So if they have ten or more lots, it'll go through the hearing examiner. They have nine or fewer unit lots. It'll go through the administrator. All of them require a public process though. So they're public comments. Um, and you know, they the short flat process and the wouldn't go through C P A, but they would all have a public process opportunity to provide brief comments. And they would all be reviewed by jurisdictional agencies. So fire district will have the opportunity to comment on fire flow, access turnaround, public works has the opportunity to comment. Um, so this isn't just an in-house done deal. It goes through the same review as a short platform. But um the uses are established by the underlying zoning. So
Okay.
Um, so let's say you have a six thousand square foot lot. And you could have a house and an A D U. You could have a duplex. Or you could have if cottage house cottage housing has been approved, so however many structures you can get and still meet your parking and your open space and everything. Uh, so this code doesn't change any of the underlying uses. It just allows you to subdivide those individual units. And they couldn't then further subdivide.
Okay. So Megan, with uh, let's say it's cottage. That means person has this is they have a major, first have a bigger house, they've got two cottages. So then each guy is um, has some dirt or ground or um, or that sort of, is it sort of considered a greater and lesser parcel kind of thing or?
Right, so it's like one parent, the parent parcel is the whole lot and these are the individual unit lots within. So those unit lots are established and if they don't meet the underlying zoning, the six thousand square foot minimum. If let's say it's RL six, they couldn't be further subdivided beyond that because one of the requirements is they have to isn't it? The they have to comply with the underlying.
The the parent parcel has to meet the underlying zoning.
Yeah.
And then but even if it once, once you do this, you you can't do it again to those individual lots.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's like you can only do it once.
Yeah, you go again.
Right, right.
One time only.
You can only do it once.
And it's since it's based on the parent site, if you had a house and let's say two, let's say you had three units and you made it into three unit lots, you can't then have an A D U on each lot because that's not allowed by the underlying zone.
Okay.
So it's not changing the density that's allowed by that underlying zone. It's true.
Right.
So it's very similar to condos. It's a different form of ownership. But it allows that lot line to be drawn versus just the individual unit and no land. So they'd be responsible. It it's it's just a a different form.
It eliminates the H O A. It's the predominant differentiator between the two. It changes the ownership structure of the land and depend eliminates the need for H O As.
Right, because they each all, they've got.
Technically, they're their own property.
Yeah, yeah, and without, yeah, the con- the condos require, you have to establish a board, you have to have your bond. You'd have to have all this other additional work that might be cost prohibitive and or, you know, just a lot of additional legwork whereas you know, subdivision would just be individual ownership of each lot versus having to, you know, build the structure of a condo. That gets structured about this one.
Good thought, okay. So if I owned a big lot and I was trying to decide whether to do condos on it or body chowling. If I did condo then everybody in the condos owns the property. But if you do cottage chowling then each cottage house owns the property that cottage house is owned.
So it's a little, it's kind of a semantic thing. So cottage housing is kind of the the allowed use in the zone. And then we have condominiumization or unit lot subdivision. So cottage housing is allowed in the zone and let's say we have four cottages. With condos, they only own the structure, not the land. The land is owned in common by everybody. If they do unit lot subdivision, it actually creates a a lot line where each individual owner could own a piece of land with with the unit itself. That's the big difference is ownership of land with the unit versus just the unit and then common ownership of everything else. Um.
Was one more profitable for the facility owned it than the other?
Yeah, every case is gonna be unique. I don't know. You could definitely say one or the other. It would be, yeah, honestly, it'd be every every owner's decision what makes more sense.
So in a condo, they'd be paying H O A fees to maintain the land underneath versus this, each person in a unit lot subdivision subdivision would own the land with their property. So they'd be responsible for maintaining it versus paying an H O A fee. Uh. There's a different.
Like H O A fees tend to be really high because it also accounts for like they they have to have sort of money in the bank for like re-roofing of building if units, you know, if there are units that share a building versus uh so you know, because of all the maintenance that has to happen outside of your walls, H O A fees are pretty high. Unit lot subdivision, you're responsible for maintaining the land around immediately around your house and the exterior of your house. So you don't end up with those fees. So it can be a little, it's usually less expensive for the owner to have a unit lot subdivision versus a condo.
So only the condos to be built about then cottage houses have another cottage house on top of it. No, okay.
But cottage houses are a kind of building. And they are defined as like a single detached unit. So you're not allowed to stack them on top of each other. They're not allowed to share a wall. It's detached units that share a lot. So if you decide to do a a cottage housing development, you could turn them into condos. So each one is its own condo. Like a condo doesn't have to share walls or a roof or anything else. Like condos can be freestanding. Um, the unit lot subdivision can also be freestanding. You cannot do unit lot subdivision if you had a a building where they were stacked on top of each other.
Right.
And you couldn't, and you wouldn't, that wouldn't be an option anymore to do you a lot subdivision.
Yes, yeah, you know, lot subdivision in in a lot of jurisdictions is used traditionally for cottage housing or duplexes and for like triplexes or town homes uh where it's very clear where you can draw a lot line. Uh, yeah, it wouldn't work for like an A D, a house with an attached A D U above or below.
Other questions, comments? So I believe the only change we made was just removing the last bit of individual unit privilege from
Right here.
Section H there. Right. Uh, someone would please present the motion with the approved change?
I move to approve with the change, the proposed unit lot subdivision code amendments based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law within the staff report and in consideration of public testimony, adopting a new code allowing unit lot subdivision in all zoning districts.
Circle. Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, second. You have a second? Yeah, thank you. All right. Okay, well, thank you. Um, that will conclude our discussion. Um, you know, lots of vision. Um, and then we have a little bit of time left, so we'll uh, move into inclusionary zoning.
We didn't actually vote.
Vote. I think we had a vote.
Sorry.
Oops.
Let's do the vote.
Only two people.
Apologies.
This is.
Yeah.
All right, so now uh, all those in favor of the lot subdivision. Are you? Hi. It is unanimous for all in attendance. Thank you for the matter.
Awesome.
Okay.
Well, it's a new.
All right. So we're officially closed public hearing now at seven thirty.
Perfect, thank you.
Now we will move on into.
Now we'll move on into inclusionary zone. So Maggie, you want to kick us off?
I know, and I ap- I I kind of apologized to the, the group before we started, um. I haven't had a lot of time to dig into this, but at our last meeting, we talked about, um, providing some examples. Um, of portable housing or inclusionary zoning, um, codes from other municipalities that have kind of a similar. Um, tourist slash mountain town feel, um, so I, I had provided some hyperlinks in the uh. Agenda for the city of Boulder, Telly Ride, Aspen, Hood River and Jackson, Wyoming. Um. I, I can click on each one and we can kind of chat, but I don't know if you had time to kind of peruse these, um, they all have a kind of a different vibe. Some are geared toward, um, more workforce housing, because that's kind of their focus is we need to provide housing for people that. Work here, um, Aspen has a really good model for that, um. Boulder had an inclusionary zoning option, they're all, I mean, they're just all very different. So, um, since we have time, I mean, we can kind of walk through and talk about them, um. Again, I apologize, didn't have a ton of time to really dig deep, um, in all of these, it was more of just a. Conversation.
Mm-hmm.
On like, what do we see, um? It's, it's a hard topic, and I think every time we've talked about it, we kind of go back and forth, like there needs to be funding. How do we get there? We all know we need this, how do we, how do we do it? Um, the examples that were shown in this, in the state are more of those larger cities. They're doing these large projects where it makes sense to do a ten percent. Um, we tried to use the calculator a few times, couldn't get it to pencil out, so, um. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at any of these, uh. But, uh.
Re- reviewing some of these and, and knowing the communities that they stem from, um, definitely impacts how they are written.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Boulder, you know, our economy is not, we can't begin to compare ourselves to Boulder's economy. Um, Telly Ride is maybe the closest best analogy, but still. Doesn't have a major urban center near, or doesn't have any urban center near it, so all like in this list. The, the Aspen workforce housing inclusionary zoning thing is still not really working, from what I understand from people that live there.
Mm-hmm.
So I. We have to kind of chart our own course based on the identity of this town and this valley. I think when we talk about what inclusionary zoning means for that. Uh, they're interesting, but at the same time, they're so divergent from our population. That's hard to identify kind of what to take and what not to take. That's my take, that's my reading of it so far, so.
Right.
I don't know where to start.
There's like bits and pieces.
I haven't, I haven't the chance to look, but. How does Hood River, how's Oregon handling?
They had more of a.
This issue, I think, yeah, I kind of want to talk about Hood River, because I thought that one was interesting.
Possibly.
It's a, so. Just after reading. What's on that page, and I haven't delved into it deeper, but it's basically a one percent tax on all new construction.
Mm-hmm.
That's both private residences and commercial stuff. You know, there's a few things that I, I change about it, but I, I think it's kind of interesting, an interesting approach. Where it's not. Dependent on a large development.
Mm-hmm.
But it's also a small amount, you know, it's not like a full unit. It's worth of. The value is a whole lot, and I, I would maybe be open to having a staggered approach, where if there's a big development, like. Three hundred apartments like we're getting put in, like I could see that being something that we would want to. You know, I don't know how you call it tax or whatever, charge a more significant rate, but I kind of like the idea. Of like everybody doing a little bit.
And then it goes into a fund.
Goes into a fund, yeah, right. You know, they even have a, a partial exemption, I would, I think a full exemption would be cool, but for like. If there's a deed restriction for a local ownership type deal. An exemption for that, you know, there's. But I, in terms of a model, I had kind of been thinking about this before reading it. It. So then they take that one percent, put it in a fund, and then are they? Yeah, so they. Purchasing your building or affordable housing, how's that? Well, so they have a, a number of. Places that they put it, um. Fifty percent goes to fund developers incentives. Fifteen percent goes to Oregon Housing Community Services Department. Thirty-five percent to fund developer incentives and affordable housing programs, but.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that can kind of be whatever we want. But. You know, I think the calculator is really confusing.
It is really.
I think that the scale of most of the development that we're looking at is not large enough to charge an entire unit's worth. And this kind of spreads it amongst everybody, you know, I especially like charging commercial developments. Uh.
How do you think our commercial downtown would react? That's the question.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know how anybody would react to this, honestly, you know, and, and it is one of those things, like, this will. Raise market rate housing prices. For everybody a little bit, you know, and there's, there's pros and cons, right? Uh. You know, I also know there's like, not that many people that own commercial lands, so.
Like it's all about the same people.
Yeah, I mean, that's my impression, that's what I've been told.
Also, this uh, that, I mean, this has, um. I mean, there, there are exemptions and.
Yeah.
Um. Like remodeling of existing commercial structures could be an exemption, like I know, you know, we could talk more about like.
Yeah.
How, you know, how do we do this without like penalizing? People penalizing the wrong person or something, you know, or creating, creating a, um. Disincentive for what we want to see, but I.
You know, we could also.
I can do a lot, and, and it, and it works like a deed restriction, because they have the like. You don't, it's kind of the opposite of like, you have to have X percentage of affordable lots, but you can buy your way out of it. Instead, it's like you have to pay this fee.
Right.
Or you, one of the exemptions is, or you can provide affordable housing directly, and then you don't have to pay your one percent fee.
Mm-hmm.
So, so it's kind of a reverse. Uh, method of getting to the same place. Uh, that I, I think you're right, that like this, at the scale of the majority of development in Lebanon, I think this would be a lot more. Um, successful, like, like I think it would actually get used, um. Yeah.
For, for definition sake, um, do we have an affordable housing definition anywhere in code? I've forgotten where it is.
Yeah.
I was trying to find it. Yes.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent, so.
Eighty percent.
One of the, one of the things that I struggle with in the inclusionary zoning in this rule, or the kind of. This puts someone in eighty percent of A M I in our county is now sixty thousand dollars almost.
But I don't know that we would have to stick to that, like that's the official definition, but.
Yeah.
As far as I'm aware, which is. Like, I think we can write it however we want.
I mean, we, it could refer to the code's definition of affordable housing, or it could refer to a different threshold if we.
Right.
So choose.
Wanted to, but that, I mean, that would be in reference to like. The deed restriction exemption, basically, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would probably be more inclined to look at something that would. Target commercial building, uh. Multi-family unit development or major subplot development. Where you, where we're not necessarily enforcing this. Across the entire destruction, but just really focus on major development, so it wouldn't put as much. Upward pressure on single family home development, but. Would, you know. Would spread the pain a little bit less with, with who, who taxes me.
But I'd rather see multi-family development than single family.
Yeah, I think that's the thing, is that is essentially saying we'd rather incentivize single family development than multifamily.
Sure. It's fair.
Can you guys speak up? I have my hearing aids on high.
Yeah.
And you're not speaking into your mic. You're looking at each other and.
Yeah.
I have.
I think we just have.
Okay.
The microphones, yeah.
That would help.
I think, uh, one. Um. I mean, this refers to deed restrictions, which is something that has come up. And we have sort of. Shied away from. But I think. It would be pretty critical to get that nailed down along. With this, and because, um. My understanding, because one of the exemptions is, um. Even for a single family home, if you put a deed restriction on it. Saying it's. You know, to be affordable, like in the affordable market, and you don't pay the one percent, right? And, and the good thing about including. Single family homes is that would then apply, and somebody could. Take that option, but normally with a deed restriction. Um. I think of those as often being applied, um, to existing homes. Like I, we were looking at something in Colorado where like. The jurisdiction would essentially pay. The difference, it's if you're willing to put a deed restriction on your house, will pay the difference between market rate and affordable rate. So that you don't lose money selling your house. But it will now permanently be part of the affordable market, and you could, you know, if someone, like any person with their single family home could opt into that. If they chose, but there has to be a program for the city to support it, because nobody's gonna just like opt into that without the funding. They would just lose money, um. I mean, unless, unless the developer is meant or the housing authority, obviously, in, in which case like. They are the funding source for that, but for like a single family home. Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
But the one percent wouldn't be enough for anybody to decide to. Alone, as a standalone, that's not enough incentive, I'm guessing, for people to. Put a house into a deed restriction. So I think it was.
I mean, unless the city, unless the city had a program.
Right.
For deed restrictions, where you could opt in, get that funded.
Have you guys talked about deed restrictions at all?
We've talked about it, Colin, uh. During the retreats.
Yeah.
And nothing, as far as drawing any parameters or criteria on how that would actually function.
Okay.
So it's just been a discussion topic, so.
Because that's one of the things the one percent could fund.
I was just gonna say that, yeah. Because I imagine the funding stream for that is a sticking point.
I mean, you could, yeah, I, they have, you know. As you know, the city says it's about two hundred thousand every year. But that's, you know, completely, so. Actually, I think, to be honest with you guys, I think this, this, I've been looking at inclusionary zoning. I think this topic really needs a joint session, myself.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I don't know that this is something.
It's you don't really know, I mean, we don't know how this thing works, there's been things thrown around like. Ten percent of your development needs to be affordable, and then, and all that, and, but we haven't really. Truthfully, the council hasn't really got a handle on it, and I think, um, that. I would see both. Both groups looking at this together and talking through it, really.
I think it's a great idea.
I don't, I both understand, but well, how's it work, but so.
And it's a big topic and a big deal and something that I feel uncomfortable as the planning commission to just. Do on our own and then be like, alright, here you go, guys.
Yeah, there's a lot of loose ends, and you know, we're like, oh, well, if there was a program. That was funded, which we have nothing to do with, like, then it would work, but like, you know, other. There's a lot of things that have to be working together.
Right.
For the, for the code to function.
Yeah, I probably should be careful about, right, but I just think it makes sense to me, we're the ones with the money to can. I'll allocate the money, you guys have sort of the expertise, but, but we need to understand. Understand it better than do it, and sure, you guys are just getting into it also, so it's like. It's kind of a process we both, what is that we're after, and what can we afford to do, because. Me is like, I always liked the idea, but. And that means. Anybody who does something here, they all have to follow that, and that's a pretty big hammer. So, I, we're gonna initiate, we should go if possible, can. We haven't known what we do before we start that. So. I would, anyway, that's, that would be my thinking.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's kind of, we've gone kind of back and forth. We've, we've, we've played the ideas and tossed it back to the council, then it comes back, and I think the best. The best thing to do is meet in the middle and talk about it. Um, because it is going to be a combination of code changes and funding sources, and how do we make it work? Um, if, if this is, if something similar to Hood River is something you want me to look at, like what I did with, um. Even our unit lot subdivision, as I called the, the city. To talk about how does this work for you, what works, what doesn't work, so it might be worth reaching out and say, hey. You use this program, how's it working for you?
Yeah.
Um, so I'd be happy to at least reach out and make that effort to, to. Because if this is something we might consider, it might be worthwhile to know how it's working for the community that's using it, so. If that's something you'd like me to do as a commission, I, I'd be happy to do that.
I think in the context of the river especially, because they have a, their excise tax program is pretty, uh. It seems relatively well thought out.
Yeah.
And they have more, they have more taxation in their city and more fee structure than we do already, so it'd be interesting to see how that was handled and how it. What its actual impact has been.
Right. I was trying to look at when they adopted this.
That's what I was gonna ask, twenty seventeen?
Twenty seventeen, and they've built a, there's been a lot of that since then, yeah.
Yeah.
Be some good stuff, it's been around for a while. See, and, I don't know, I, it's kind of nice to bounce ideas off other communities that are dealing with this, so.
I wonder, not to, um, I want to be careful I don't intrude on your process and, so. I just was thinking if it's possible to have them even. Join our, uh, you know, join one of our sessions or join, have, so we can ask them, you know, like you can. Get some good information, but they'd be willing to actually.
Get the little presentation.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to reach out.
Okay.
That, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Any objections to proposing a joint meeting?
I think it's very appropriate, absolutely.
Great.
Uh, I'll just work with.
You can ask.
Yeah, on when's the next available, I know we plan on doing it in January with the docket, but. I don't know if there's anything available sooner, but, so.
Yeah.
I'll hold up.
Good.
Uh, at least on this topic, it needs, yeah, we're, we're gonna keep kicking the can until we can actually.
Yeah, I would go, you know, I don't know, what do you think, uh, sure, about a joint session to talk about this?
I don't think it's a bad idea at all, it's a good idea. Is Hood River in Oregon?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's in the gorge.
But they have some of this.
Don't we compare ourselves to another state with the, you know, the taxes and everything that everybody does, but. Hey, I mean, sometimes I feel like. Sometimes I feel like moving to Wenatchee where most of my old friends have moved. You know, I think it runs. People who don't make a lot of money. Can't afford to do all these taxes. They just. You know, you gotta survive yourself.
Well. This sort of.
The things that's been, uh, sort of been to tax.
This would only be a tax on new development. It wouldn't be, so, so if if you already have a house, it wouldn't. It wouldn't affect you, like it doesn't increase property tax.
It does if they wanna use the multi-family tax exemption program.
That's separate though.
I know, but that's another.
Yeah, that's.
Page of one years for somebody else, you know, I don't know, it just. I guess I think in the time when. You, if you wanted something, you figured out a way to get it yourself. You worked, you might have worked three jobs lots of time. And, you know, and um, so it's hard for me to. Transfer. What I believe, what I know, how I grew up. Where it's the day where it almost looks like handouts, rather than somebody working for it.
Right.
I don't know. I never shut up.
I think in this case, it's, I know it's another state, they do have some similar issues with um it being a tourist destination. But people also have to live and work there, so it's just more about like, we're not gonna copy exactly what they're doing, but like, hey, what's working for you? What's not working? Cause if we can glean from other. Even if they're in another state. It can help us kind of formulate what's gonna work for us, cause whatever works for love and work is not gonna be the same as what works for Hood River. Or for Spokane or for Wenatchee. Um, so it's gonna be something that as a community, it's figured out, um, but it wouldn't. It wouldn't hurt to reach out and just see if they'd be willing to tell us what works. What's worked for them, what hasn't worked, just because they've had this program in place for quite a few years. So. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, this is basically coming up of. Building permission stuff, but people were like building, that's what it's coming from, right?
Yeah. So it's. So new development.
New development.
Yeah. So if somebody subdivided thirty lots, each new house that's being built would have this.
Sure.
Potentially contribute to the fund for. That's how they've built it at least.
Okay.
Um, so it'd be all new development.
Hey, whatever, the next house, maybe not take a pitch for that myself, because we haven't, you know, yeah. Yeah, being where I just made a pitch, I think this, but you know it's coming.
I like that, working together.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a big, big topic, so. Doing it together would be smart, I think. In the beginning.
Well, I'll get working on that. Um, I did not have anything drafted for like next meeting because it's been, this has been like the open-ended topic. Um, pretty soon we're gonna be working on docket for next year already, cause our next meeting is over. Um, so I'll be putting that together. Again, this is brand new for me, so your patience is appreciated. Um. But uh, moving forward, that's kind of the direction we're going. Looking at what we've accomplished this year. And what we're looking at moving ahead, we have a big comp plan update coming, so that's gonna take a lot of time.
This next year, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it starts like now, um, so the community visioning is starting next week. Um, that's kind of the intro to the comp plan update, so. Uh. Just kind of working, working through all of that, so we're gonna have a lot to do over the next. Two years.
Well, if. With with that said, if there's things that you think commit, planning commission should be at or recommend, will you? Shoot us an email or dates and times or whatever?
Yeah, so there is actually um an email that's going to go out on the visioning process, we have our first meeting about housing. Um, this coming Monday night. And then the following Monday, it's going to be about kind of economic development and over tourism and those kind of issues. And then the third is going to be more environmental kind of impacts. Um, and I'm sorry if I don't have the wording right on any of those, but um, as. Like city staff, council, planning commission, we, the goal is to be, um, if you attend, you're a listener. So it. It's intended for us to be active listeners, so the community that comes in is just giving ideas and we're there to soak it all in. Um, if there's questions that come up, we're gonna document them and respond, but it's not a question and answer response time, it's just to hear what the community has to say. And be active listeners. So, that would be like our roles.
Right.
Commissioners, council, and staff. It, I mean, it's kind, it's pretty exciting, I hope we get a good turnout, because it is really important, it's what guides our comp plan. Is it's supposed to be a document that's what the community is wanting, so.
So we supposed to be there, like?
You do not have to be there, it's, but I'll send that, you'll probably get an invitation that says, hey, this is happening, here's the dates. If you wanna show up, your role is gonna be as a listener.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, it'd be great, because it's good. They, this has been a long time coming. Casper did this. Five, six years ago, one and a half session, we just talked about. What were the issues, the community, I don't know how many times they've met, but it was the one time I. It's, I remember reading about it in the paper. And uh. They sat down and talked about issues in the community and what, how they. But basically that's it, what's happening here, what do we want? Uh, and this is kind of the same thing, except it's three different meetings and three different. Subjects and uh, that's less than best of, but I think uh. Everyone, if you can be there, that'd be a really good thing to hear firsthand, I'd find it on three. Uh, system. He's kind of. Called it life two, as it did in life one back in the sixties. Uh, life improvement for everyone. I think this is kind of what we've been trying to get, it was all set up and COVID hit. Lost track, so. Hopefully. You get a good critical mass of folks and it's a good discussion. Listening stuff.
And there'll be a lot of like discussions, small group discussions and moving around and.
Maybe different facilities, right?
Yes, so, yeah, um.
Let's see.
Mike Nash.
Yeah.
So he's gonna be our emcee for every. Every night.
He's great.
Um. And yeah, it's just that community engagement is what we're looking for. It's like, we're not there to like push any agendas, it's to hear and listen. Uh, so, we're, we're hoping for a good crowd.
Yeah.
But you should be getting an email this week, check your email.
Yeah. Have you guys, you were at a survey, it went out?
The first one's on that night. So just coming Monday.
Yeah.
That's the house, the one about housing.
The mailer went out to people in the city. Four weeks, three weeks ago.
I just didn't realize we were officially involved until the mayor called us out and was.
Yes.
An email.
Good one today.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, it's just, it's. It's volunteer, it is going to be, I think, livestreamed somehow, we're still trying to figure out the technical.
Festival as far as live streaming, but yeah, we get rid of.
So we're gonna find a way to livestream it, so if you can't attend, you can listen. Um, and then I, I think after the three meetings, and they're gonna have a, another meeting just to kind of recap everything, so.
Yeah.
Um, you'll get filled in somehow. That's.
Perfect. Um, so just quickly before we adjourn, I do kind of wanna. Do a quick check in on our docket for twenty twenty four.
Should we pull it up?
Pull it up.
I sure will. Give me a moment. Takes me a while to get there, sorry, it's embedded. I will share a screen.
Just all the scope.
Yeah, it brings us to go forward.
Should be pulling up here in a second.
Alright, so, uh, looking at the very top one, the, the continuation from twenty twenty three, we did manage to. Uh. Achieve the cottage housing. We did the code amendments, but it's called code cleanups, I'm sorry. Um, inclusionary zoning, obviously, we're addressing that now, but. I think that we agree, we do need a joint session to understand this one a little bit better. Um, item B condominiums, that is complete. D was parking, off-street loading and parking. Uh, we have not discussed this one yet. D as well, um, regain with urban draw, boundary expansion.
I am working on that.
Okay.
And that's part of the comp plan update, so I am working with AHBL, um, instead of expanding the UGA. So it looks like we don't require any additional land, we're looking at the potential of doing a, a land swap. So certain areas of the UGA that don't look like they'd be feasible for urban development, we could swap the county to. Move, shift our boundary a little, so we're looking at those options, that was something new um in state law that just passed, so.
But doesn't the county drive that process?
We can request it as part of our comp plan update, but they have to for good. So.
So this might be.
It might not happen. But.
This might be something that.
We might.
Push to the.
It might be.
The comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Has, sorry, has the county indicated that they have any interest in changing our UGA stuff?
I have not been able to have any of those conversations. Uh. But I think what we're doing is kind of that overall anal- analysis right now and see, okay, what if we did this, what would that look like? Would there be a benefit? And then maybe working with the county to say, would you support this? Um. Yeah. We're looking at options.
Great.
But that might move down in our list, um, still there, but part of the major comprehensive plan update.
Um, item E was evaluate triplexes and townhomes. I wonder if some of this has kind of been tackled with condominiums and, you know, less subdivision already. Well, I feel like this doesn't necessarily reflect post or joint meeting. I think this is what we went into before a joint meeting, and then after the joint meeting, we. Redid priorities and.
I think that.
Yeah.
Triplexes and townhomes is more for that missing middle, which our city is not required, there's certain things that other. Other cities are required to address with the comp plan update, this is not something we're required to do, but it's something that our housing action plan asked us to look at. Um, so we did address duplexes, so now we allow them in single family zones, this would be looking at allowing triplexes and towns. So as well.
Good.
Uh, so that is not, we did the cottage housing, but this is, this is something separate.
Uh, item F, review manufactured housing. So again, looking for some of that missing metal or potentially cleaning up this to make it a little more feasible.
That's been on the docket for like nine years.
Yeah. And we did, I think we did address HP thirteen thirty seven.
We have, that's the two AUs per lot. That's something that again has to be addressed. The twenty twenty six update, or there are some cities, like city of these, Wenatchee has already adopted this, there are some cities that are. Just getting ahead of the game, um, but it is something we wanna start considering. Uh. Yeah.
So. Thoughts on. Looking at, you know, we really only have. Two, three meetings left this year, one of those will probably be spent planning for next year. What of these kind of last three EF or G do you think we could tackle? Personally, would be curious of looking at F. Review manufactured housing.
Are we looking at manufactured homes on residential lots or actually like? Mantra, uh, manufactured home like parks? Cause I know. We have some code criteria for manufactured homes, um. I mean, I could pull everything together, I know like the manufactured home park or mobile home parks are like. Our code is from the eighties.
Right.
Um, and then we do have some criteria that could be limiting in our residential design standards for manufactured homes. Like there should be requirements and things like that, that might be, not be the same as. It just worth looking at, I guess, so I would pull together what our current codes are, and then we could review them for anything that could be a hardship or like. Why are we limiting this and not treating them the same as a?
I read it. It seems like it would be. Not what, not that. Process.
Yeah, I mean, at least to start looking at it, and we haven't opened that, that box yet, I. I know we have a lot of the same standards, I know we looked at manufactured homes a while back to try to treat them the same as. As stick built, so they have to be on a permanent foundation. So there are some. Requirements there, they have to be the designated manufactured homes, they have to not be previously titled, can't be more than three years old, there's certain standards.
Right.
Uh, but if there's anything that is. That we see as a. A barrier replacement, because we don't, I, I have a process of manufactured homes since I've worked here. We don't see a lot of them coming in, are they more affordable to place? I'm assuming yes, but. The only, we had a mod, the modular triplex is the only thing.
Right.
That has been any kind of free bad that I've done. So if that's something I could put on next. Months, I mean, I'd be happy to at least pull the code. What do you think?
Any other thoughts on what you'd like to tackle? I mean, I don't see much purpose in it, I remember, I feel like Lilith told us we had to do it legally for some reason, but I can't remember why.
I think just part of the state mandates is to make sure we, we don't have any kind of um.
Restriction.
Regulatory barriers for any type of disruption.
Yeah. I mean, I.
Yeah, I. Feel like it makes sense to review what we have in case there's some like, oh, that. Thing is obviously why nobody's doing this, but. Yeah.
There are also, I'll pull the state law changes, I'll pull our code. I'll put something together.
Should that one? Yeah, I mean, should, should we pull the codes, find that there's not a ton, and that we can skip to this one pretty quickly?
Hmm.
What would be your number two preference to try to tackle this year?
I thought C, we.
We did review.
Already did that. Is, so I guess that could be something like. If there's some loose ends that we could wrap up with parking, we could.
Let me see, I, I know we looked at residential parking, we, we really drilled in on that. I don't know what we looked at. We didn't look at commercial, and I don't know what the issues were with commercial, if it was more. Um, the landscaping requirements. So like, we have landscaping for all parking lots that are over a certain number of spaces, even if they're on an alley. So. There were some, I, I saw that as an exempt alley parking lots from those landscaping standards. Uh. If there's not a visual impact. Uh, but I know we, I know we addressed residential standards, we talked about, um. We just made the modification to B and Bs to access off alleys and not have that turnaround, we talked about. Allowing alley access outright, because for a long time, we, you had to have access off the city streets, we made those changes. We made the residential um driveway standards, we modified those. Um. So I know we did some changes, we have fourteen twelve one five seven now, it's a new section, and then we have one sixty. Uh, so I think this is, C was partially completed.
Yeah. It seems like hopefully.
If I can.
If we can just kind of go through and be like, is there anything else? I, I think the commercial. Stuff. We should probably get more direction about what it was that we should. What, I mean, my recollection, cause this has been like floating around for a while, because we kept dealing with residential stuff. And I feel like the council was like, well, what about? The giant exemption that like commercial structures under.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand don't require parking, um. And is that still something? That actually would like us to address, or with the changes in parking that have happened? That council would like us to address, or with the changes in parking that have happened in the intervening couple of years? Like this closing Front Street, whatever else, is that?
That question came up today, that exemption. Uh, and like, how, when we've talked about like a fee in lieu of, like, yeah, if you're doing a commercial. Yeah, we don't wanna see the downtown port of, require parking, but do you pay into?
Yeah.
Parking, so, because people are parking for your business, this, and you're not required to provide it on site, so do you fund it elsewhere?
Yeah.
So then eventually we have our parking garage.
Right.
You know, anyone else in, outside of the central, the CC district is putting in parking, so they're exempting these. Which I get, cause we don't want parking right, but down there.
But it could be something.
That, so that's been a question that's been kind of on the radar, and do we wanna have a, a fee for new develop, new development?
Hmm.
Uh, to fund parking, if they're not required to put it in.
Yep.
Again, that's not your guy.
Right, and that might go back to being a council question, but.
But that's something to look at.
They wanna solve that stuff.
Something I can relay. Uh.
This party's been on that for a long time.
It has been on there a long time, but what I should probably do is look at, go back and listen to what we talked about with the docket last year. See what we've addressed and what those big, cause I honestly don't remember the parking. Uh, and I was here for those discussions, but. I feel like we, that one's been partially done.
Okay.
Uh, so if I can follow up on parking and the manufactured housing, that would be at least something to check off and, and review.
Just throw it on the very bottom.
Yeah.
And. Never.
Oh, there's more.
Yeah. But this one.
Which one?
And the notice, the tribal entities and processing amendments is due by twenty twenty five.
Oh, yeah, that's more procedural, I don't know that it has to go through the planning commission.
Great.
It's more procedural requirement that, this is on my radar because.
You blow it up just a little bit, sorry.
So this is more like our timeline.
You can yell too, but.
This is more like our processing timelines, so some state law changes, like, um. If you're familiar with the land use decisions, the hundred and twenty days for a short flat from determination of complete to a preliminary approval. Has always been a hundred and twenty days, now the state's saying, you have to do it ninety days, so there's just some procedural timelines that are changing. I, that's not a development standard, so I don't think it needs to come before the PC for us to modify that. Uh, that is something that is hundred percent on my radar, cause I just got a notification like two weeks ago, and I was like, shoot, we have to do that. So that might be something I throw in with everything. As well, to be like, hey, this is what asked changed, at least it goes, even if it doesn't have to go through you guys, so it's on your radar. And you know what's happening, but yeah, I need to get that done. And we do notice tribal entities, I think we're in compliance with that. Um, it's just making sure that. Uh, whatever we have codified matches what the state's requiring.
Right, so, well, we wanna do the fun stuff, we wanna do manufactured housing and parking, okay?
I mean, I would love to talk about. The G, the second Adu, that will probably turn into a larger topic. Considering it has like twelve subnets just on there. Um.
We have twelve twenty six on that one, so I'd be better to wait.
Urgent, can you go back down, there was one other.
Down here.
I didn't know, I was like, maybe that would be shorter. Um, J.
Oh, the deviation.
Hmm, that would also be a, like, let's look at what we have and just have a discussion about. Um, what? Because that's not like, let's write a new code section.
Right.
That's like, do we wanna make some little adjustments? So that could be something we could review in a fairly short time.
Yeah, it's very open ended, the ten percent deviation is very like, open ended, so it's, it's kind of like. Gives you that buffer, so you don't have to go to the hearing examiner, and staff can administratively approve this, but there should be a hardship, there should be a reason for it. Um, and then when we made the, the height change last year with the code. We wanted to amend this so that you couldn't ask for a height deviation, because then you get back up to what the, almost what the allowable height was before, that was the problem. So, um, and if somebody did need a deviation, they could go to the hearing examiner with a hardship, it just doesn't give us the administrative authority to do that.
Good.
You're gonna always ask for variance, this is just the like.
Administer.
Administrative version of.
Although our variance, if you have a non-conforming lot, you cannot apply for a.
Oh, yeah, that was that. Yeah, applied for a variance before I learned about that.
Yeah.
And they're like, we can't remember this, no, you weren't fun.
Okay, uh, I think that's good, I mean, so parking manufactured homes and ten percent variance.
Yeah.
We can potentially tackle some of these simultaneously, so.
Right.
If we can move some of these, you know, through discussion next meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, do any code changes in. So, or in November, and then potentially hold hearings for all three, or how many we get to in December, then we can. It's a progress on the list here, yeah. All in agreement? Yep. Any other questions, comments, or? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion?
Call.
Hey, come on.
Calls on the docket. On the board, do you have one, uh, thing that needs to get changed in the minutes, we have to remove. Interim community director and just make it community director.
Last, but last month it was.
Congratulations.
Today is my first article meeting. I was gonna ask one neighbor.
Yeah.
What's that?
I was gonna ask if you.
It isn't, it was official yesterday.
Congratulations.
So.
That's awesome.
Well, yeah.
Well, sir.
I do appreciate your guys' patience, uh, cause.